I'd like to call to order our August 18th Cary Planning and Zoning Board meeting. And we will begin by adopting our agenda. If we have no amendments, can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And next, we have to approve our July 21st regular meeting minutes. Do we have any amendments? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the July 21st regular meeting minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, that motion carries unanimously. And next, we will begin with our public hearing process. And before we get into our first public hearing, I want to provide just a little background for those attending on how our public hearing process works. We will begin with a staff presentation of the factual details of a proposal. Following the staff presentation, I will open a public hearing and our first speaker will be the applicant who has 10 minutes to present their perspective on the case. Following that, we will open the public hearing to others interested in any particular case. Each speaker has five minutes to present. You're going to notice a little black box on the left podium. That black box will have a green light on it for the first four and a half minutes. At four and a half minutes, the green light will extinguish and a yellow or orange light will come on, and that will stay on for 30 seconds. After five minutes have expired, a red light will come on. And at that point, in order to be fair to everyone, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks. I ask that speakers be concise, adhere to the five-minute limit out of respect for other speakers. If you have a number of you that feel the same way and have the same information about a case, please designate a spokesman. Please direct your comments to the full board. We will not interact with you. This is our chance to listen to you, and so don't be surprised if we don't give you And following that, I will close the public hearing and we will open the case for discussion among members of the board. And we will at that time ask questions of the applicant. And it is usually not our model to ask speakers or people, other people that had spoken at the public hearing, questions. We will begin with case CPA 14 CPA 04, which is the Ridgefield Farms. And Ms. Chandler is going to...
Thank you. Good evening. This is a comprehensive plan amendment request for 95.64 acres in northwest Cary. The subject properties are located along Ridgefield Drive between Green Level Church Road and NC 540. The slide shows properties that were notified of this plan amendment request. And the slide shows stream buffers and floodways within and around the subject property. There is a fairly extensive greenway network proposed in this area, as you can see with the mostly green dashed lines. Both Green Level Church Road and McCrimmon Parkway are existing major thoroughfares. And there is a future C-Trans route planned for Green Level Church Road. As per the Northwest Area Plan, the current future land use designation for the subject properties is medium-density residential, which is defined as three to eight units per acre, and includes Note 6, which reads, "Ridgefield Farms lots should only convert from very low-density residential to medium-density residential uses when at least three or more adjacent lots are consolidated or assembled for that purpose." The applicant proposes to change the land use designation to low-density residential, which is defined as one to three units per acre, and Note 6 would be changed accordingly. At the town council public hearing in July, the applicant's representative said that the property owners in this area desire lower-density residential and high-quality development. Two other citizens spoke in favor of the comprehensive plan amendment request. Also, one of those citizens who spoke at the town council public hearing called today and asked if he needed to come tonight. And I said he could stay home and relax, and I would pass on that he wanted to share his support again. There are four criteria in the land development ordinance that are to be considered when determining whether or not a comprehensive plan amendment is necessary. Staff believes the first item, changes in projections or assumptions, is met. In 2002, when the Northwest Area Plan was adopted, one of the assumptions was, in order for the area to be financially feasible to be redeveloped, that a densities of three to eight units per acre would be needed. By virtue of this application, apparently this has changed, and the property could develop or redevelop at a lower density. In addition to those criteria in the land development ordinance, some other things to note are the natural features and the roadways around this neighborhood create separation. There is, this request proposes a decrease in density adjacent to the Alston Regional Activity Center and Research Triangle Park. And the Northwest Area Plan had a vision of a land use transition getting more dense going towards Research Triangle Park. And also note, there is a decrease in consistency with the growth management plan. While this case may not bring the ideal residential density to support the goals of the Northwest Area Plan and the growth management plan, this request would increase the residential density compared to what's on the ground today. So on balance, staff recommends approval of this request. Following the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Board may make a recommendation on this case to town council. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. At this point, I'll invite the applicant to join us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm with L-Star Management here in Raleigh. We are making this request, basically, as a, this request, the basis for this is a result of several factors, primarily the surrounding neighbors. About a year and a half ago, we worked on the project just across the street, which was the Braymore subdivision. And we had quite a bit of feedback from the Wecroft residents at that time. It was through that process that we learned that low-density residential was really more desired by the residents in this area. Not only that, as we started to look at base mapping and looking at the existing condition of this tract of land, or actually 12, 13 tracts of land, what you've got is, you've got significant topography, you've got significant environmental features, streams and buffers that we felt were, it was important to respect that. And so with that, we've worked with the 13 property owners who all, I'll have them stand rather than them come up and talk to you, but these are the Ridgefield Farm residents that we are under contract to purchase the property from, and they all support this request from reducing the density from medium-density to low-density residential. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to us? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for questions. And I'd like to begin by thanking the residents of this area for joining us tonight. It's nice to see a bunch of folks up in the gallery. Any questions? To help you all, we have been studying these cases for a while, and some cases are really easy and some are hard. I think this isn't one of the hard ones. And so if we're not going through a lengthy debate, it's because this is a pretty obvious case. So if you have a motion, Mr. Shaw, would you make it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board forward case number 14 CPA 04 to town council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan it's proposed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The reason I made the motion, I think, I think this is basically a no-brainer almost. It's a very obvious thing. Very pleased that it is going to the land use designation that it should have been all along. So I'm very happy to support this.
And I'll say that I agree with the staff's observations of the separation from the natural features and the roads, and also am in support.
Other comments?
I would just concur with what's already been stated, that I see this as certainly a good use of this space, and whenever we can reduce some density, it's a good thing in Cary.
In that case, if no one else has anything else to say, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor, the motion is stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to our next public hearing. And again, folks, thanks very much for joining us. I'm sorry, we didn't have more drama for you. You made it pretty easy. Next, we're going to move on to case 14 REZ 15. This is the Barbie tract. Ms. Granton?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 13.2 acres located at Davis Drive and Hogan's Valley Way. Subject property is shown here, highlighted in yellow. And a zoomed-in aerial view shows the subject property, its two parcels. Smaller parcel here along Hogan's Valley Way, and then the larger tract. Cary's land use plan designation is low-density residential, and a small portion of the property is designated as parks and open space. The existing zoning is residential 40 and PDD. A small portion of the property located along Hogan's Valley Way has a PDD designation on it. The proposed zoning is residential 12, conditional use. And this shows you the proposed zoning in relationship to the surrounding equivalent zoning for the Preston PDD, just so that you can get an idea in terms of lot size. What the equivalent zoning is, is similar to a residential 12 to the south and the north of the subject property. This area circled in red shows you the relationship of the subject property to the overall Preston PDD. And then zoomed in a little bit so that you can see it more closely. This was residual land when Hogan's Valley Way was installed, so it did not have a designation as part of the open space system or one of the buildable lots in the neighborhood. This was just leftover land. And so part of the rezoning is to remove it out of that PDD and give it a designation for its being used with this adjacent property. At the initial town council public hearing, the applicant proposed a zoning condition that the maximum density shall not exceed two dwelling units per acre. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the request. The property was posted and advertised. There was one protest petition, the area shown here in blue, which was greater than 100 feet from the boundary around the property, so it did not add to the validity of a protest petition. But we did note that the concern related to traffic on Davis Drive. Topics also raised at the town council public hearing, there was a speaker, a citizen, who expressed concern about cutbacks through the neighborhood with traffic, I'm sorry, cut through traffic through the neighborhood and road connectivity. A second citizen spoke about construction traffic. And then there was discussion about historic preservation on the property. One of the council members asked whether or not it was clear that there would be a future road at the end of DeCorley Lane, and this shows that it was recorded with the right-of-way going right to the subject property. So the expectation was that that road would someday continue to this neighborhood, new neighborhood. In regard to historic preservation, as indicated in your staff report, there is a historic structure on the property, the Barbie House. At the public hearing, one of the property owners spoke and stated that this was their childhood home, that they were supportive of the plans to redevelop the property, but there are no plans to preserve the house. The applicant also had someone speak about the number of champion trees on the subject property, and that there's efforts to look at that and try to balance preservation of the trees. What staff did is arrange for a meeting with Capital Area Preservation. A member of staff did go out to the site and met with the property owners and the applicant. So we started the wheels in motion for discussion, but it has been clearly stated that the applicant is not interested in offering a zoning condition related to any sort of preservation. So the conditions before you tonight, the original condition about the density that was presented at the first public hearing, and since then, the applicant has offered a zoning condition that the minimum lot size shall be 13,000 square feet, and that the average lot size shall be no less than 15,000 square feet. So this puts the lot size in a very compatible status with the surrounding neighbors. The site has just a tiny portion that's impacted by a stream buffer, and that will be field-determined at the time of site plan review. Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan shows that there is an existing street-side trail on the opposite side of Davis Drive, shown in blue. And Cary's transportation plan identifies Davis Drive as a major thoroughfare and Hogan's Valley Way as a collector road. And what that means in terms of planning is that there would be a 50-foot streetscape required on Davis Drive and a 30-foot streetscape required on Hogan's Valley Way, along with any associated road improvements along the property frontage. There is a future C-Trans route, actually a fixed C-Trans route along Davis Drive. And this concludes staff's presentation. This time, I'd like to call upon the applicant, and then following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant to come and tell us more.
Yes, sir. My name is Chuck Smith, Withers-Ravenow, representing the property owners and Preston Development Company in this matter. Deborah did a thorough job explaining where we've been up to this point. I won't go over the issues that we talked about in the original public hearing. I think you're aware of those. I will just say that in keeping with our promise to the adjacent neighborhoods and area residents, we had promised them that we would do something that would be, that would fit in seamlessly with the existing character of their neighborhoods in Preston. And so we've tried to do that. And with our additional conditions that we added since the last public hearing, and thus the need to have another public hearing, we wanted to offer more clarity. Some people don't understand what having a density less than two units an acre means. So we put a minimum lot size on our lots of 13,000 square feet that would exceed the requirements in an R-12 subdivision zoned area. But also, since that, you know, we're not trying to completely go with that lot size. Our average lot size would exceed 15,000 square feet. So I think with that, that gets into establishing a character and establishing a value that is consistent with the neighborhood adjacent to us. The other things that I'd like to touch on, getting back to some of the issues, one of the issues we dealt, we talked about during the original public hearing has to do with the existing home. It sounded a little harsh to say we aren't offering conditions to save the home. That's what we had, what we decided to do after meeting with, we've met with home movers. First of all, we can't keep the house in its existing location and honor any sort of street network that fits into your standards, fits into the existing access points we need to connect to, and also not come off of Davis Drive with our access. So when we put all those things together, we could save the house in its location, but the back of the house would be facing a street, and the front of the house would be in people's backyards. And so we don't feel like we can do, we can keep it in its existing location. So we talked, we had a tree, a home mover come out to the property with us and look at the house and talk about the consequences of trying to preserve the house. If we move the house off-property, it would have to be cut up into three to five pieces in order to do that, to navigate the roadways. That would, in doing that, you can do that. And I'm not going to tell you that that won't happen absolutely. We don't think it will happen that way. But in doing that, you will lose the champion trees that are, there are three, there are two champion trees, a third champion, or a third tree that's a half-inch below the designation that you have in your ordinance for a champion tree. So we're calling it three champion trees. We would lose those champion trees in order to cut the house up and move it if it was going off-site. We then asked the question, can you, can you move the house on-site and save the trees? And we could get no commitment that they could absolutely do that. Secondly, you've, I think you probably heard family members say that they did not want to see the house preserved. So because of our commitments to family members and to the trees, we've decided that we are not absolutely committing to save the house. It may be saved. But we are absolutely committing to save the trees, which your ordinances require, your ordinances don't require to save the house. Your ordinances require us to save those trees. So we are falling on the side of the family and of the trees when it comes to the house. Secondly, there were concerns that came up during the original public hearing that had to do with traffic. I think you've gotten a letter from the Flannigans. I think they copied you on the letter that went to staff and some council members, I believe. We had committed during the original public hearing that we would try to, or that we would include conditions that dealt with some of their concerns. We were told during the process that we are not allowed to do that. We were told, and I believe this to be true, that engineering department has standards and policies that will address some of those issues. And while I don't know that I'm completely current on all the policies they have in that regard, I will say that I know we've done things in the past, like put a fence up at the end of the Corley, for example, where the street stub goes into our property to keep traffic, once the streets are built, keep traffic from establishing the pattern, their driving patterns until a number of months later, in hope that those, your pathways of driving would be established, and then you open the street. And the theory is that people would not change that. In this case, I don't know that that's going to happen, because I do believe, I do think that the point that the Flannigans make, since Davis Drive was improved and medians included many people will cut through to get to the stoplight to be able to head south on Davis Drive. Will that, will that say that you should not make the connection? I don't know. We're happy to not make the connection if you believe that's in the interest of safety within the neighborhood. But as I said, we can't make that sort of commitment during the zoning process. It'll be during the subdivision process. We also committed, we were prepared, and will route our construction traffic off of the existing driveway off of Davis Drive as long as DOT allows that to be there. And that's in order to build the streets, build the, install the utilities. Once the streets are in, then at some point, they would open off of Hogan's Valley, I believe. I think it would be delayed off of DeCorley. And at that point, I don't know how long it would take to construct the houses. So the house construction traffic will take a longer period of time, obviously, than building the streets, installing the utilities. So they would, right now, be coming in for a point of time off of Davis Drive, but then at some point, those houses would be built, they would be blocked from coming there, and then it would be off of Hogan's Valley. I don't think we would suggest, again, because of some of the things we've talked about, about trying to have construction traffic off of DeCorley and keeping a fence up through that construction period would be a way to prevent that. And I think that's all I have to say. And I'll be happy to take any questions if you have any. I'm sorry, one more, one more point came up late that I got an email about today, but it was more about the issue of why Hogan's Valley is considered a collector. That's probably more of a staff issue. You can see Hogan's Valley was built with a number of driveways on it. Our collectors these days typically don't have the driveway connections on them. I don't know if this was going back and identifying something as collector after the fact. Or I know from Mr. Jensen's response, I saw it had always been intended to be a collector. And it serves as a collector even though, back in those days of the mid-'80s and early '[1475.04][1475.04]'90s, when it was, when Preston was developed, that the standards were a little bit different. So driveways were allowed then. So anyway, I don't think that that's our issue, but I'm sure it'll be a conversation point as we spend the next few minutes together. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing to other inputs.
My name is Alan Knuckles. I live at 105 Benin Oak in Preston. And I'm also the vice president of the larger Preston Homeowners Association. We had a meeting with Chuck Smith and their organization and the applicant at YMCA, I think it was, no, the community center. And he said that they were going to have their own homeowners association. I'd like to have the applicant consider being part of the larger homeowners association for, because in our neighborhood currently, we have standards and we have a couple, there's over 40 homeowners associations, I think 34 is in the larger one. And we do have some, don't think it's derogative, but like donut holes. And I've heard the same thing comment in the town of Cary, there's sections. And there's one section in our homeowners association where, when you have a separate one, they go dormant. And that one section is one of the worst-up-kept neighborhoods in Preston, our community, because there's like 40 of them. So I'd like him to consider, like maybe when the development is 95 or even 100%, or I'd say 95%, turn it over to the Preston Community Homeowners Association so we can keep up the standards of the whole neighborhood. For the past 15 years, the Barbie farm and the first 20 feet and the whole floor of property, our homeowners association has taken care of that property. And we've spent our money of our community of the 1,200 and some members, might be more than that, sorry about that, I don't have the exact number. But we've been taking care of the property. We've been mowing the grass. We've been buying pine straw for the whole floor of property there and mowing that too. So we think that we've been helpful and been a good citizen to keep that property looking good, because nobody's been on the Barbie farm for a number of years. We've kept Davis Drive. So we think it would be a good consideration if they would turn that over to us so we don't have something that goes dormant like some of, one other section has. And we appreciate your consideration if that could be one of the requirements of this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Bennett. I reside at 103 Preston Harbor Lane, which is very close to that property. And I don't have a concern, I have more a question for the board. I went to the website and I couldn't find an answer to this question, so I just want to pose it tonight. In terms of the conditions that are...
a hundred percent, or I'd say ninety-five percent, turn it over to the Preston Community Homeowners Association so we can keep up the standards of the whole neighborhood. For the past fifteen years, the Barbie farm and the first twenty feet and the whole floor of property, our homeowners association has taken care of that property. And we've spent our money of our community of the twelve hundred and some members, might be more than that, sorry about that, I don't have the exact number. But we've been taking care of the property, we've been mowing the grass, we've been buying pine straw for the whole floor of property there and mowing that too. So we, we think that we've been helpful and been a good citizen to keep that property looking good, because nobody's been on the Barbie farm for a number of years. We've kept Davis Drive. So we, we think it would be a good consideration if they would turn that over to us so we don't have something that goes dormant like some of, one other section has. And we appreciate your consideration if that could be one of the requirements of the, this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Bennett. I reside at 103 Preston Harbor Lane, which is very close to that property. And I don't have a concern, I have more a question for the board. I went to the website and I couldn't find an answer to this question, so I just want to pose it tonight. In terms of the conditions that are proposed by the applicant, it's a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. And, and with that minimum lot size of thirteen thousand square feet. What wasn't clear to me is what's a, a dwelling unit? Is it an apartment house? Is it a series of condos? Is it a single family home? Is it duplex? When you say dwelling unit, it's not clear what sort of unit they're putting on that size property. And that was really my question for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I think when we get done with the public hearing, we can address that one pretty easily. Next speaker, please. Anyone else? Saying no one approached the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for discussion. And so we don't forget, I'm going to open with the, what is a dwelling unit in this place?
In the residential twelve zoning district, townhome or attached residential product would be prohibited. So the use would be limited to detached residential.
So did that answer your question, sir?
Correct. Yes, it is single family.
Excellent. So, questions?
I have a couple. Could we address the other item that was brought up at the public hearing regarding homeowners associations? Is that something that would be addressed as a rezoning typically? Is that a private agreement?
That is a private agreement, correct.
So that really needs to be taken up between the applicant and the HOA, and it's not a zoning condition we can deal with here?
Correct.
And can you tell us anything about the adjacent property to the east? It's shown as R40 on?
Yes, and I apologize for not explaining that a little bit more clearly. The Barbie tract is this entire large parcel, and only a portion of that is proposed to be rezoning. A member of the Barbie family has proposed to retain the R40 designation on this portion of the property to the east with the zoning application. There was also an annexation petition submitted that would just address the property to the west. So we notified property owners adjacent to the entire parcel, but only, only the western half of the property is proposed to be rezoned.
And if that were to develop later is, and maybe you don't know this, but it kind of looks like it's, would be sort of landlocked, or maybe it would?
It has frontage to public right-of-way. And I'm going to zoom in on another slide that's a little bit closer so that you can see this more clearly. Let's see, this is the front portion that's proposed to be rezoned. And here's the, the entire parcel has frontage to public right-of-way at the end of this cul-de-sac. It's heavily impacted by a stream buffer and a pond, as you can see here. But there is a small area that has the potential for future building, and it does have access to public right-of-way.
And in that question, I guess I have a, in that case, I have a question for the applicant, if he doesn't mind. And while you're coming down, the, the question is, was there any consideration thought, discussion with the property owners of perhaps moving the historic structure somewhere onto this other portion of the property?
I will say the answer to that question is yes.
Fair enough.
I don't, I don't think I want to, I mean, these sorts of issues within families are very emotional. And I'd rather just leave it, leave it at that. It's, it's a difficult issue when you're talking about people's homes that they grew up in. And we're trying to be respectful of that. I realize that you, you know, you have the right to go in any direction you want to with this, but just from our standpoint, that's what we're trying to do, so.
You answered the question, thank you. I think that's all I have.
Question about the connectivity. First, because of only the western part of this, of that entire parcel being part of the rezoning, is it, would it be correct in assuming that Burlingame Way is not to be connected to this? Connectivity does not apply to Burlingame Way?
That is correct. That is not part of the application.
Okay, so that's not?
Burlingame, where it ends in the cul-de-sac, that's correct.
And I know that there's work going on about modifying our connectivity ordinance. Any modification would apply to possible connection with DeCorley Lane, I would presume.
What is the question as to?
If the present ordinance and any modification of that would affect connectivity onto DeCorley.
Not necess, I don't really understand the question, I apologize. The, the current ordinance right now, today, would require the subject property to connect to public right-of-way. So whether, whether or not the ordinance is amended to allow consideration of connectivity at a rezoning, is that the question, or whether or not the?
But you answered the question. Presently, it would, the ordinance would require it.
Correct.
And that is something?
And it may still require it in the future. We just haven't, you know, we just haven't evaluated fully exactly what the extent of examining the connectivity ordinance is. So it may be determined that it's still appropriate in some cases and some conditions.
Any idea when that ordinance provisions will be written and brought to us?
Not, not at the moment.
Okay. The main entrance to this property would be off of Hogan Valley?
We do not have a site plan yet. I don't have that answer yet. That would be something that would need to be addressed with DOT as to whether or not, on this state-maintained road, Davis Drive, whether or not an entrance would be allowed there. There is a high likelihood, without question, that there would be a, an entrance off of Hogan's Valley Way. Whether or not that is the main entrance, we'll be able to tell if and when a site plan is submitted, subdivision plan.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Rogers?
I just have one question concerning the, the house. Is there a current?
Mr. Fisher, let me correct myself, I'm?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, is there a current designation or a pending historical designation for the Barbie house at this point?
It is on our inventory of historic places. I'm going to ask Mrs. Redling from our staff to speak to it. She's actually the person who was out at the site and, and took a lot of photographs of it, so she can give you a little more accurate information.
The house doesn't, doesn't currently have any other status other than that it's on
our inventory. It was reviewed maybe ten or twelve years ago, and in conjunction with, maybe fifteen years ago, in conjunction with road improvements of Davis Drive. And during that time, they did what was called a determination of eligibility, which means they think that it would be eligible for the National Register, but no, no steps were taken to place it on the National Register, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you to come back, Anna? We're in the process of getting educated on historic significance in properties. Can you maybe help us understand details of this property that makes it potentially historically significant? I'm trying to get a little bit more information. It helps us figure out whether we want to head down that road or not.
Well, the, the survey data we have about the house is that it's been in the Barbie family since the beginning. The rear of the house, it looks like an addition, but actually, I believe, was the original small cabin or small structure. And the belief is that was in the late eighteen nineties or so, or eighteen eighties. And then slowly, over time, as happens with families and houses, the front of the house was built and made to be the main house, and then the back, which was the original smaller house, is used, was still used and attached. So the house and the grounds were one of the, of Wake County's farm properties. In a typical Wake County fashion, the family worked its own land, and as it became, they gained stature and land, they increased the value of the house. And it just reflects our agricultural heritage. And it's just a nice example of the wealth that was built in Wake County. And it's, it's a very nice, the architecture is, is nice, and especially nice are some of the features on the front, that, the columns and the, the, there's a little bit of a bay window in the front, giving it a little bit, what we call a little bit of a downtown look to a farm property. So those are the details we know. And just think it was a nice example of the turn of the century farm property and the growth in farming.
Thank you. Before you leave, one more. Cutting the house into three pieces. Now, we've seen some houses moved that weren't chopped in three. Is there something unique about this house that would lead you to understand that it needs to be cut in three, or?
I think that, I would have to leave that to the, the technical people who move houses. I know sometimes you can move a house that has a piece, an L, off the back. In this case, they looked at it and we'd have to check with them to see if it was because originally it was actually a separate building in the back. I'm not sure why.
Thank you. And just to follow up, I think I heard from the applicant that part of the, at least part of the reason was presuming it would be moved offsite just to meet road widths and things like that. Is that correct? Either staff or applicant?
And also bridge clearances.
Right, roads, bridges, thank you.
Maybe taking the second story off to be able to get it under a bridge if you had to go under a bridge.
Right, it's a part of his?
See the height of the house.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions?
One quick question. So this is R12 conditional use at two dwelling units per acre?
Correct.
Standard R12 is what dwelling?
Twelve thousand, no, standard R12 actually would have a higher density than that. It would be three point six dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
So the two dwelling units per acre is more restrictive.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Perhaps a motion? Someone, please speak.
I'll make a motion. Let me see, where am I at here? I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number fourteen REZ15 Barbie tract to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I make the motion. This is, I think, a proper fit. It's less zoning than the surrounding R12. Historic properties are always a tough, tough issue, but again, it's also, like the owner said, a very delicate issue with family and history and sentimental values. There's a community sense to that house, but at the end of the day, if I'm not mistaken, they can keep the zoning the way it is and still do with the house what they will. So I'd love to see them do something with it, save it, that'd be great, but at the end of the day, that is the owner's call. So, so I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Other comments?
And I'm supporting it because I, I like that they are doing the reduced sites or dwelling units per acre and the fact that they are saving the champion trees. They've addressed that. I think there's going to be additional traffic and during construction, but that's one of those that we're just going to have to live with it for the time being. But I think it's a good property, good use of the property.
Other comments?
I'll, I'll say, I, I think it also is a good plan, with the exception of the loss of the historic resource. Hate to see that. It's a one, once it's gone, it's gone. Absolutely acknowledge and respect the owner's prerogative to do what they like with that house and save the champion trees. And I appreciate the, the family situation and the intricacies that come from that. But I really would like to see a little more done, if possible, and sort of pursue any avenues that might be there. I think we've seen some pretty amazing saves of historic resources recently with the Upchurch Farm, with the Richard House, with the, some of the structures on the Jones Franklin property. And just would like to ensure that everything really is pursued to its ends here. We've also seen structures moved in pieces, at least one of those I can recall from the Davison High House site. And because it is a community value and our historic preservation master plan does encourage its preservation, I'd really like to see a little, again, pursue it to every logical end.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
I like the, the development, the size of the lots go in very well with the neighboring area all around it and some distance away. I particularly like that house. I wish it could be saved and hope that somehow it may be saved. I was, had a discussion about traffic with some of the neighbors who, who brought it up. And I pointed out that the effect on the Davis Road, Davis Drive, traffic is minimal. But I've said before that when you get into considering something to be a de minimis problem, you get into the question of using the cliche, death by a thousand cuts. And this is a small cut, but it, that does apply. But thinking about it further, looking at Davis Drive and the possible other nine hundred and ninety-nine cuts that we, we may get from that, it appears that Davis Drive is pretty much built out, that we don't have a problem of other things following along in approving one by one, just small little increments of traffic. This would probably be the last in that area. So those are the things that, that enter into my thinking.
Other comments?
I'd like to just make one observation on something I think we're going to see more and more of. And that is, when we see these properties that at, a long time ago, a large development was built around them and this, this one smaller chunk was, was retained, when that finally does go into development, we're going to hear things like we heard about the HOA. Now granted, that's not germane to what we're doing here. But one thing I would point out is, some of the most successful, easygoing cases we've seen are when the neighboring community and the developer come together and say, we've talked this out, we've worked it out, and, and we're here together to say, we've got something that, that works. And that's a great opportunity, so I'd just like to mention that, that, you know, HOAs have an awful lot to offer. They're not just restrictive about how things should be done. And for them to work with new development areas, a lot of times, many problems fall away before they ever get to this room, just out of sheer cooperation. So I, I hope we see that coming in the future, when, when we have these sort of cases show up again.
And just to be clear here, that is not something we can put in a zoning process?
Not at all.
It isn't a condition we could accept as part of a zoning process, and that would be an agreement between the developer and the HOA that we basically have to stay out from the middle of.
Absolutely.
If there are no other comment, comments, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion carries seven to one. And since I didn't hear a lot of negative, I'm going to ask you to give me a little bit more perspective on your opposition, please.
It, it is based on pursuing all avenues of the historic structure and nothing else.
Okay, so it, it is all historic structure?
Yes. Yes. Other than that, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you. We will move on to case 14 REZ 16, the Flint property at Indian Wells Road. Ms. Gronin, you're up again.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone 4.74 acres located at 7041 Indian Wells Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. And an aerial view shows the subject property is developed with a single-family detached residential home. The land use plan designation is medium-density residential. And the subject property is also located within the Northwest Area Plan, which has stipulations about the types of housing units that should be in the development if there's a mix of uses, but in the event of a single-family detached house, housing, no mix, shall be required. And that's what's been requested, is for a single-family detached. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the applicant has asked for residential 8 conditional use, which is consistent with a recently approved rezoning case immediately adjacent to the subject property. The applicant has proposed to limit the density to three dwelling units per acre and limit use to detached residential. And property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the request. There were no protest petitions. There were concerns from nearby developers that the applicant had not been required to conduct or participate in a traffic impact analysis. At the town council public hearing, the applicant spoke to this and reported that the yield fell far below the 100 peak hour trip threshold, not just for this one lot, but even when incorporated with the rest of the development, it still fell below the threshold that would require a traffic study. There is a stream buffer indicated on the southern portion of the subject property, which will require field determination at the time of development plan review. And this is showing you the location of the proposed future Greenway Trail to the north of the subject property and street-side trail that will be along a future collector road in the general vicinity of the property. Carey's Transportation Plan identifies a future collector shown here with the dash blue line just to the west of the property. And the closest transit route is along NC 55 Highway where there's a triangle transit route. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present tonight and may wish to speak to you briefly. Since there were no changes in zoning conditions, this does not require a second public hearing. I'll be available for your questions after the applicant speaks. Thank you.
My name is Adam Ashbaum with L-Star Management. As Deborah mentioned, what this is, is a continuation really of a larger piece that was approved previously. The only reason this was done separately is because we were not able to work out the contract specifics with this particular property owner at the same time as the surrounding residents. Again, with regard to the traffic, we currently have a site plan that's in for review that has 60 lots on the larger parcel. This continuation would add 10 lots, so that 70 total units is well below that threshold for a traffic impact analysis. Aside from that, we are doing significant improvements that are required as a part of the town ordinance. One is the portion of that collector road that Deborah showed is being constructed across our property, even though it doesn't really serve our property. In addition to that, there's a pretty significant stormwater culvert that has to be built under that road that will serve some of these upstream properties as their drainage comes down that branch of Panther Creek. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one, if I may. The land use plan for this is medium-density residential, correct?
Uh huh.
And the rezoning proposes, and that's three to eight units per acre, correct?
Correct.
And the rezoning proposes a maximum of three. Would that be consistent with MDR for...
We would look at the overall, we'd look at the overall area and take that all into consideration, looking at the open space. So yes.
It's usually the opposite case that we are faced with, which is how high do we go? All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
With the base, as far as grading on the entire site is one thing, or just individual cutting is required?
I'll have to look into that. I don't know exactly how that, I need to refer to the ordinance. I don't have that ready to answer right off the top of my head. I don't know how the plan's going to be proposed.
I think a couple of years ago, we went through a grading.
I just can't remember it.
Grading is allowed when, when building permits are pulled for each lot? Is that correct? Jeff, helm me here.
She's getting it.
It's on a case-by-case or a lot, permit-by-permit basis with the grading. So they can do, when it's medium-density, they can use, do the utilities and the streets at one time, and then it's on a case, lot by lot by lot? Sorry, wasn't prepared for that.
Okay.
So as they get a permit, they would do the grading?
It's good to know that my memory hasn't totally faded.
Yeah, I think the LDO is worded based on the density. And three is the borderline. So I don't know which side of that it falls on. Okay.
Yeah. I can follow up with you after I have a chance to review the language.
If I may, although I realize it's not germane to zoning, but again, we have a site plan that has been submitted for the larger tract, and we do show a road extension through this tract. The plan is that we would just build infrastructure. We wouldn't go and mass grade and clear lots. The plan is that we'll build infrastructure and put in utilities and required stormwater ponds and roadways only, and the lots will be kept to the greatest extent that they can. They will be kept treed until such time as a home gets built, and then the home would, you know, in order, based upon the placement of the home, then the grading on the individual lot would be determined at that time, if that helps.
Yes.
We've been trying to wrestle this one for a long time, and we thought our lot by lot strategy was going to work, but then people started pulling permits for all of the lots at the same time, and then extending them when they hadn't started building and said... There's still a sensitivity here. I appreciate your enlightening us. Other questions?
I have one. At the, at the time of the original R-8 zoning, you would have gone to the applicant, you would have gone with this application as well, had you been under contract?
Yes.
Was that made known at that time, that there was other properties that could come into the mix? And the reason I ask is I'm concerned about the property to the west. Is that one going to be the next in the mix to go for R-8?
Not, not by us.
Okay.
It's certainly possible. We have, we have discussed with just about every property owner within direct proximity of these developments. Again, the plan was always to include the Flint parcel, although at the time of those public hearings, we weren't yet under contract with them. And so it would have been inappropriate for us to say, yes, we're going to include this at a future time. We didn't have the ability to say that at the time.
Other questions? On that case, a motion, please.
I'll move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 16, the Flint property to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
We have a, was that you Buck?
That was I.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'll just say again, I agree with the staff analysis that's here. I think this is consistent with the surrounding properties and is at the lower end of the density that would be available, that would be appropriate according to the land use plan and helps complete a larger plan by adding a small number of dwelling units.
Other comments?
Just that I concur with that. The reason for my support of this, it's a continuation and consistent with the surrounding areas and seems to be the best use for this property. Yes, I fully understand why this is a separate rezoning request. I think that's been answered and it's certainly understandable. However, looking at the previous one, I believe that was 95 evening peak hour trips, and the present one that we're talking about now is 18. So together, 113, that is over the threshold. So I think based on that, if that is correct, a traffic study, I believe, would have been warranted because of the fact that this really can be looked at as one big proposal. However, fortunately, there have been two other traffic studies in this immediate area, which gives us the information that any other traffic study would have given us, so it really doesn't make that much of a difference. But basically, we have another problem here of multiple projects adding together, adding up traffic. Now, there are three projects, four projects on the Wakena Road, Indian Wells Road area, one of which has been approved, two of which are, have had the council public hearing and awaiting to come before us, and then of course, the present one, so a total of four. Based on the information given to us, that's in the evening, 380 trips going in to the property. In the morning, 306 trips altogether. Now, there've been a number of traffic studies applying to NC 55 and the intersections on that. And every intersection from NC 55 and Carpenter Fire Station all the way down to NC 55 and High House Road, based on the traffic studies that have been done, several different traffic studies, they're all failing. And we're adding more and more traffic to Highway 55. Relatively small amount as far as this particular rezon is concerned, but we're increasing the amount of traffic above what is present and what is even in the background for the future. So for that reason, I oppose this based on the additional traffic and additional congestion at those intersections.
Other comments? In that case, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, I believe that is eight to one.
Seven.
Or seven to one, excuse me.
Seven to one.
Thank you for the correction.
Thank you.
Let's move on to case 14 REZ 14, 215 South Academy Street.
Good evening. This is a request to rezone about a half acre at 215 South Academy Street. This is a vicinity map. You can see South Academy Street here and West Park Street. This is aerial view, shows a closer look at the property. It's developed with a single-family residence that is historic landmark. The existing zoning on this site is general commercial conditional use. In 1987, this property was rezoned to B1 conditional use, was intended at that time to be used as a restaurant, and there are a number of zoning conditions that were put on it at that time for that purpose. And those are listed here. They basically relate to restrictions on uses, setbacks, landscaping, and parking. The Ogle purchased the property and instead of developing that as a restaurant, it was restored from a, as a single-family residence. The zoning conditions, however, did carry over when the Town Center Area Plan was adopted in 2003, which is some background for why the current zoning on the property is general commercial conditional use with these conditions that were brought over from 1987. The proposed zoning is the HMXD High Intensity Mixed Use Sub District of the Town Center. And you can see here, this is consistent with the sub-district zoning in the remainder of the area and is consistent with the TCAP. As you can see here, this is the, in the Town Center Area Plan, the land use plan and the zoning have a one-to-one correspondence with those, between the districts and the designations in the plan. This, the property is in the historic district. This just shows the boundary of the historic district. There are no stream buffers or impacted areas on the property. There is a street-side trail shown on the Carey's Parks and Greenways Plan. This would be developed, or the design of this would be in accordance with the downtown streetscape plan, and any right-of-way, if needed, would be provided at the time of site plan approval. This again shows the, that the street is designated on the streetscape project. The applicant is not required to actually construct any of these improvements in this downtown area at the time of the site plan, but right-of-way would be dedicated if needed. This shows the transit, there is a C-Trans fixed route and also a triangle transit route along South Academy Street. This is a notification map that shows properties that were notified of the public hearing. There was one protest petition submitted, however, that was determined not to be valid due to sign, an improper signature on that. In terms of the protest petition, the comment that was cited on there just was a question concerning lack of information on an adjacent private street, and again, that protest was not valid. There were no speakers at the public hearing other than the applicant, and there were some general questions from council members just regarding options related to detached dwellings on the property. This concludes staff's comments. I will point out Mrs. Ogle, the applicant did call today. She asked me to let you know that she has a situation, she was not able to be here this evening, but did ask that you consider the request. And that concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. Questions on this one?
Just a clarification. As pointed out, this site contains one historic landmark, one of Carey's premier historic structures, one of six or seven landmarks, I guess, depending on how you count the Carpenter Stores. And the detached dwellings, according to the staff report, would require a certificate of appropriateness from, I guess, Wake County Historic Preservation, or is that correct?
Well, in the event, with the HMXD sub-district, there is a use that's allowed in the, in the proposed zoning that's not allowed in the current zoning, which is additional single-family detached dwellings.
Right.
In the event that any additional detached dwellings were proposed on the property, that would be a special, a special use permit would be required, and as part of that special use permit, a certificate of appropriateness would be required.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just, Deborah, one curious question. They're talking about adding three dwellings? Do you know the...
There, at one, there has been some discussion from the applicant about using the ability that would be provided by the ordinance with regard to going through the special use permit process to add some, there, actually, there would be multi-family detached dwellings so that the property, even... So that the property, even if there were, even if the units were detached, there could be up to two or three units that could be built on the property. It would require a special use permit. And the units themselves would be treated as multi-family in that the, all the area outside of the actual footprint of the building would be in common space.
And with the applicant not being here tonight, do you mind if I ask you, are you, under the assumption that, from what the staff report lists, that the applicant plans on residing in at least one of these dwellings?
I, I can't speak for the applicant in that, in that sense.
You've heard nothing different, then?
I've heard nothing, I've heard nothing different, different from that. Those are, and, and those are all options that the applicant could pursue as, through the special use permit process. There's certainly no requirement to do that. And we don't, there's no guarantee whether or not such a request would or would not be made.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, could we have a motion, please?
I move to the board forward case number 14 REZ.
14.
14.
14 REZ 14 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans. And it's reasonable and that in public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I'll just say that I think this rezoning was expected, given the change to the HMXD underlying use, and therefore is, I agree, it is consistent with, with the zoning district and with the Town Center Area Plans. So I'll support the motion.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll just say, along those lines, under the considerations that we need to look at for rezonings, I mean, I almost look at this as, as number one, correcting an error. I mean, this should have been HMXD a long time ago. So I think we're just putting the proper zoning on what's currently there to match everything else downtown.
I, not liking the word error, I'd say this is just cleanup.
I'm just reading from the laying.
I understand. And I would like to suggest this is cleanup of a process. If there are no other comments, I'm going to call us to vote. All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And we're going to move on to our next case, which is 14 REZ 04, High House Road North. Ms. Bearman again.
This is a request to rezone 27 acres at 2420 and 2504 High House Road. Property is on the north side of High House Road. It's about 300 feet east of NC 55 Highway. Can see to the north of the property, the development to the north is the Somerset subdivision. To the east is the Berkeley subdivision. This is just a closer aerial view. There's a vacant parcel immediately adjacent and then a second parcel adjacent to that that contains a single-family dwelling. The existing zoning on this site is R40. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions would limit the land use to detached dwellings with the maximum density of 2.5 units per acre. The land use plan designation is LDR, Low Density Residential, which allows one to three units per acre. This property, as well as the property to this, on the south side of the street, these properties were subject to a recent land use plan amendment. The land use plan designation was changed from medium-density residential on this site to the low-density residential, and it was removed from the West Park Neighborhood Activity Center. So a corresponding piece of this rezoning request is also to remove this property from the mixed-use overlay district that corresponded with the property being in the activity center. So the rezoning request does include those two components, changing the zoning from R40 to transitional residential conditional use and removing the mixed-use overlay district. The site is impacted by stream buffers, according to Kerry's GIS maps, and feel determination of these features would be made at the time of the site plan review. High House Road is designated as a major thoroughfare. There is a C-Trans fixed route along High House Road passing along the frontage of the property. No protest petition was received. At the public hearing, a resident from the adjacent subdivision did express support, but requested that the intersection of High House Road and Sir Walker Lane, which is located about 600 feet east of the property, be taken into account as the road designs are finalized, ready road construction along the frontage. Also, there were concerns expressed by council members, including the potential for max, mass grading and the cumulative impacts of this rezoning request, High House Road North, and also High House Road South, which was submitted concurrently. That's a separate rezoning request on the south side of High House Road. That rezoning request has not come forward yet, just as, for information, there is a historic house on the south side of the road. The applicant is still working with that. So that separate request will be coming before you later, but it's not tied to this request. And that concludes staff comments. At this time, I would ask the applicant if he would like to add any comments.
Good evening. I'm JW with IDS. Just want to give you a background information on both the north and south side and why we're here with both pieces, but individually. The property about 18 months ago was left to a number of family members in an estate. And the northern piece by the family members was looking to be sold. And the developer was pursuing that request. And as part of that request, you know, we were looking to do single-family homes, and we went through the process, well, we'll need to amend the land use plan to remove the MDR, which we're glad that has been approved. But with that, you know, as part of removing from the activities center itself, staff suggested that we look at both sides in whole, even though there's no intended use on the south side right now, such that we would then not piecemeal this request because it's the last undeveloped properties that you have out there. We agreed with that, and so we submitted both cases. And by saying that, there's no intent that we're trying to do something that, to get away with traffic or traffic impact. One of the things I'd like to point out is through the neighborhood meeting, a lot of the adjacent property owners, predominantly all single families, you can see, were very surprised to see MDR and HDR designation there. And the traffic did get brought up. But very positively, through those meetings that we have with the neighbors, they all agree and supported this request because they know this would be the least traffic generator that you would have. And their concern wasn't about additional traffic, it was just existing traffic. And they felt like some of the road improvements that were made by the town in the past with the traffic islands that are there at Sir Walker with people doing U-turns and going Wellsley, those U-turns are causing queuing coming out of South Sir Walter there, Walker. It's like they're having to wait to let people do U-turns. So it's like our current situation, this, this project will probably not impact that, that will always be there, is of some concurrent concern. But with that said, we actually did at the public hearing, one of the first for me in many years of this career, had a, not a protest petition, but a petition presented to council in support of this request on the north. And so we look at it as a, as a great transition from these single-family, we're next to commercial. We will infill this site to look at single-family, to fill exactly like what's around it, a least impact on the traffic. We do have a substantial wetland buffer to the north, which even though it's single-family to single-family, provides approximately 100 feet plus on that northern boundary to separate those uses. We just feel like it is a good fit, and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up for questions. Questions from the board, please?
Again, just a clarification. I guess a way to put this is, this High House Road North rezoning is associated with the High House South, but this case here is independent rezoning case.
It is independent. It's associated only in the sense that there was a land use plan amendment that covered the entire area. And so for that reason, the timing, they came together during the public, initial public hearing.
Thank you.
Why wasn't there a traffic study done for this, in the south, together?
It's not required by the ordinance.
I know we formerly had an ordinance that did require, or did prohibit phasing in order to avoid that.
We do, there are requirements related to the, related to the site plan, site plan improvements that can't be phased, so as to avoid requiring improvements. But those requirements are in the site plan, are coming to play at the site plan. There isn't a requirement at this time for, in terms of looking at that at the point of a rezoning and the requirement for a traffic study, where they're separate projects.
For the worse, but we repeal that. Because I noticed that adding the south and the north together, we have 103 morning and 129 evening trips. And that, that does get into the range of being significant.
If that was, if it was one rezoning case, then that would be, that would trigger the trip threshold.
Now, on this particular, the northern portion, the ingress and ingress from the site would be on High House Road?
Correct.
And would that, and there's a median there, would that be right in and right out?
I think I would refer to Mr. Jensen. He has any comments?
Good evening. I think the answer to questions, a little bit unclear at this point in time since we don't have a site plan. But again, in the, in that scenario, yeah, without some sort of break in the median, adding a new median opening, yeah, it would probably be right in, right out only. But again, that's unclear at this point in time. They've had just general discussions with DOT and us about access, but nothing, nothing committed at this point in time.
So of the cars leaving in the morning, those that would be leaving towards the west, turning right, and those that desire to really head towards the east would have to make a U-turn at 55.
Most likely.
There's nothing between there and 55.
That's correct.
A U-turn.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Single or questions, I'm going to ask for a motion then, please.
I move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 04, High House Road North, to Town Council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is a reasonable, it is and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I'll say again, following the land use plan designation of changing this to low-density residential, I think this was expected also. And I think it is reasonable, it has the support of the neighbors. And if separating it from High House South, in fact, allows progress to be made on perhaps saving the historic home on the southern property, then I absolutely think it's a good thing to move them forward separately and, and take this one forward as it's ready. So that's the reason for the motion.
Other observations?
Yes. I think this is probably the most egregious case I've seen of avoiding a traffic study by having two separate zonings and looking at them individually and ignoring the cumulative impact. Now, I fully understand bringing the north ahead of us if there's still considerations that need to be done in the south and not holding up the north for that. However, I think that we really need to start looking at cumulative impacts of rezonings. And since in the past, I believe this would have required a traffic study, and if it was one rezoning, it would require a traffic study. One should have been done there. No other traffic studies in the immediate area that would cover this, unlike previous proposal. The problem I have with the traffic is the fact that High House Road and 55 is already congested, it has been congested, on the only recent study that was done in this area, which was some time ago on the Bradford-Davis and I House. But it covered, it showed it as, it's already, it's already failing in 2013, last year. Background, 2016, failing even worse. And with the additional Bradford, even worse than that. Here, we're adding traffic that will be making U-turns in the morning at Highway 55, already congested intersection with a large queue of cars trying to make left turns. And we're adding U-turns to that. In the evening, cars coming from 55 and from the west would have to make a U-turn on High House Road at one of several different intersections already up. And they have already been a problem with U-turns being made those there. We would be increasing the number of U-turns. So I would, I think that this probably is consistent with the rest of the area and maybe should be a good neighborhood. However, the, I think the additional traffic is overburdening High House Road, the intersection at 55, and some of the other intersections too much. They're already overburdened, it's enough. Particularly when we start looking at cumulative impacts, we see that we can't really take anymore. So I oppose this.
Other questions? Other points? In that case, I'm going to call it to vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I believe that is seven to one. We're going to move on to our next case, which is 14 REZ 10 Wheeler Woods subdivision. Ms. Bearman again.
This is a request to rezone about 6.8 acres on True Love Drive. This is the site, you can see the future location of the Western Wake Freeway and Bell's Lake Road, 1010 Road in this area. This is a closer aerial view. There are two existing residences on the property. The existing zoning is Residential 30 in Wake County. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. Proposed zoning conditions include a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet would be required in TR without this condition. The maximum density is three units per acre compared to three units per acre allowed in TR. The minimum lot width proposed is 60 feet with 70 feet for corner lots compared with 40 feet in the conventional TR. compared with 40 feet in the conventional TR district. Minimum side setbacks proposed are five feet. The conventional district would allow a six-foot combined setback for both sides. The land use is limited to detached dwellings, and the applicant has added, proposed a condition that no slab construction would occur on the property. This is a land use plan. The plan designation is LDR, Low Density Residential, which allows one to three units per acre. This is a notification map, shows the properties notified of the public hearing. In terms of the public hearing itself, there were concerns expressed with worsening traffic and other impacts on True Love Drive. This was a concern expressed by a neighboring resident. Now, I would point out here that True Love Drive was extended in 2012 with the development of the Park at Langston subdivision, which is immediately west of the property. There was also concern with the proposed five-foot side yard setback that was expressed by a council member. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'd ask the applicant if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening. My name's Don Curry, Curry Engineering Group, on behalf of the applicant. We appreciate your consideration of this rezoning request. We've worked very closely with the True Love family in putting together this proposal, both for the rezoning and the eventual single-family subdivision that is scheduled for this property. As Mary mentioned, we are meeting the requirements with the land use plan, with no less, no more than three dwelling units per acre. Really, probably the only portion of this that's a little different is the, is the setbacks on the side. And what that does for us is really gives us a lot of flex, more flexibility in, in building custom homes with variation and articulation, allowing bump outs on the sides and things like that with, with variety, as opposed to having what otherwise would be a tendency, I think, to build slab-sided buildings or homes without that architectural variation. So that's really the, the purpose behind that request. And I just want to give you a little bit of that background and reason for that. So, but I'm available for any questions and be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple. The R8CU property to the west, that would be 8,000 square foot minimum lots?
Actually, with that property, the zoning conditions that go with that property allow for, there is a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. They do have a zoning condition for an average lot size of 9,200 square feet.
Okay. And could you go back to the slide with the conditions, if you don't mind, please? If I understand this correctly, these are exceeding what is required in the transitional residential in just about all these cases. Is that?
Well, all zoning conditions exceed the requirements of the district. So in this case, since there were so many dimensional standards included with those conditions, I did, for comparison, put the requirement, the base requirement in the TR district so that you could have that for comparison.
And I'm trying to compare and contrast with that property to the west. And what I'm concluding is that, that these conditions make it more similar to that property to the west than what might be allowed in, without these conditions, with just what would be allowed under the base TR. Is that?
That's correct.
A reasonable conclusion. Thank you.
Other questions? We're quiet tonight. In that case, could we have a motion, please? Somebody?
I'll move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 10 Wheeler Woods to Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
One second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
And I'll just say that the basis of my questions was intended to establish that this is, in fact, a good transitional residential use for the, the surrounding properties. I think the conditions that were offered make it quite compatible with the surrounding area. And applaud the applicant for offering them and, and making this, again, compatible and a reasonable transition, in my view.
Other comments?
I'd like to just say that I commend them for the no slab construction. We hear that a lot. And, you know, we all know construction costs. That's a way to put a product on a lot and have a higher profit margin. But, so I commend the owner and the design engineers for putting that condition in there.
Other comments? Seeing now, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. And now we're going to move on to 14 REZ 11 Kensington Place. Ms. Behrman, we're working you hard tonight.
Okay. This is a request to rezone about 16 acres located at 6,200, 6,308, and 6,312 Holly Springs Road. This is on the west side of Holly Springs Road, between the Colonial Baptist Church to the north and the South Hills Baptist Church to the south. There are three parcels included in the request, two entire parcels, and the third parcel to the north. A one-acre portion of the site that contains an existing residence is maintaining the existing zoning and is not included in the request. The existing zoning is residential 40. This shows the existing zoning in the context of the mixed use overlay district for the Swift Creek Activity Center, which is immediately to the north of the site. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions, conditions would limit the land use to townhomes. Also, in the northwest corner of the site, west of the stream buffer, the applicant's committing to, including this area in common, open space with a minimum of 4,800 square feet of gathering space and a pedestrian connection, and also additional landscape material along the western property line. This is illustrated in this exhibit that's a part of the request. You can see open space area that is committed to on the opposite side of the stream buffer. There is an existing crossing of the stream here that would be used to, to connect the developed portion of the site with this open space area. And also, along the northern, or the western boundary, I guess it is, adjacent to the, these lots that are located in the Coventry Glen subdivision, the applicant is proposing some additional landscaping to ensure that that buffer is maintained. Southwest area plan shows this area for low-density to medium-density residential. It is subject to Note 13 that basically states that this area should be developed as medium-density only, at least two to three of the adjacent lots are consolidated, which is the case in this case. And there's also a note regarding access points, where access points would be minimized in this area. As I mentioned, there are stream buffers shown on the property. The specific field determination would be made at the time of the site plan review. Site is not impacted by any proposed greenways or street-side trails according to the Parks and Greenways Plan. Holly Springs Road is designated as a major thoroughfare. There are no transit, existing or proposed transit facilities on Holly Springs Road. There is a future C-Trans route shown along Tryon North to the, Tryon Road to the north. This is a notification map showing the properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did not receive a protest petition, and there were no speakers at the public hearing other than the applicant. A council member did express concern that the proposed density was at the upper range of the MDR land use plan designation. And that concludes staff's comments. And I would ask the applicant to come down if there are any additional comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Board, Jason Behrman with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. I want to make two comments, and then I'm going to hit a couple of points. First, it touches on a comment that Mr. Evangelista made earlier in this case, or earlier, earlier tonight. We are pleased to be here with no opposition. We are pleased to be here with no protest petition. I was very concerned on the front end of this process when this client contacted me about development in this area. As you all are aware, the Pritchett Track rezoning just went through, and fortunately was approved and reproved six to one. But there was a lot of public concern and interest and comment on that case. And so my client, to their, to their credit, really got out in front of this one and worked closely with the Coventry Glen Homeowners Association and the folks who, who live adjacent to this property to make sure that whatever was going on, on this site was not going to significantly impact their standard of living. So again, we're very happy to have worked closely with the HOA and avoided any, any opposition to this case because that is, it is important. Second, if there were ever an opportunity to have a case where you should just, where I should just stand up and say, read the staff report, and sit back down, this is one of those cases. And it's a credit to the staff. I mean, I will tell you, my colleagues who work in other places in this county are jealous of the extreme detail that the staff goes through in preparing these reports. We really have an embarrassment of riches when it comes to professional staff. If you read this report, it analyzes the Southwest Area Plan, the Growth Management Plan, the Affordable Housing Plan, the Historic Preservation Plan. I mean, fortunately, the council has given them all of this guidance, the town has given them all this guidance, and the staff leaves no stone unturned. That's a long way of saying, if you read the report, what it says is this plan is consistent. This proposal is consistent with all of those plans. This is an area that is very walkable to Crossroads. Crossroads is a mile away. And just briefly on the C-Trans, though, there is a C-Trans stop that's a little over a mile away. So it is walkable. It's at the Lowe's Home Improvement. And the Maynard Loop 1 and 2 hit Lowe's Home Improvement. But, you know, you're, you're right on top of Tryon and Holly Springs Road. That is roughly a quarter of a million square feet of non-residential services. Again, located in a very walkable area. Swift Creek Shopping Center is right around the corner. And again, Crossroads is not too far away. I do want to touch briefly on the significant buffering that's built into this site. It's one of those sites that, and I think one of the reasons why we don't have opposition here is because it's conducive to buffering. And I'm just going to show briefly, and you saw it on the map, the significant natural feature that this site houses, which serves essentially two things. One, first of all, there is no traffic stub, so we don't have the situation that we all ran into with the Pritchett rezoning with that vehicular connection. But two, you, you can't do anything in those buffers. There is a natural buffer built into the site. So rather than a developer trying to figure out, how many units can I lose in order to appropriately buffer these folks, mother nature has already done that for them. They, that's taken the guesswork out of it. So with that said, we're here to answer any questions that you all might have, and we're very excited to move forward with this case and respectfully request you all, you all's recommendation of approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a correction that I just, just learned in your staff report, the, under the traffic generation numbers, I just, just noted that the numbers that were, that were created in your staff report were for single-family rather than, single-family homes rather than townhomes. So the actual number based on townhomes would be about 40%, about a 40% reduction. Okay. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Those numbers in your staff report are high.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have one.
Please.
What, if any, would be the requirements for buffering between this site we're talking about and that little cutout in the northeast corner with the existing home on it?
I, I would have to, to look that up. I don't know off the top of my head. But I believe that that would probably, I believe that would be a 40-foot buffer. I believe that would be a 40-foot type A buffer, but I would need
Okay.
To
Thank you.
Verify that.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question on density. The low-density residential, LDR, is one to three units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And medium-density residential, MDR, is three to eight. And this is LDR to MDR, so you would expect within those bounds, right?
Correct.
And what's proposed is six? Is that correct?
What's proposed is six.
All right.
Also, in, in the context of the LDR to MDR with the note that's provided with Note 13, the move up to the MDR would be, would require the properties be combined. So presumably, if there was a single parcel that was requested for development, it would, unless it was combined with one of the other parcels, it would be at the low density.
Yes, thank you.
A little bit first about the traffic. As far as Holly Springs Road, what improvements will be made on Holly Springs Road?
As part of a site plan, the development will be required to widen along their frontage to one-half of a four-lane median divided roadway.
So their frontage would be widened. But what about area that is not in, in front of their property? Are there any plans on?
We don't, we don't have any code requirements for things outside of the frontage.
Will Cary be, or, or DOT, or any?
Currently, there, there isn't any funding designated either in the state or in the Cary, you know, budget to, to widen that roadway at this point in time. That'll be considered annually as we go through the budget.
I'm concerned about the possibility of a bottleneck just outside of either end of there.
That's correct. Yeah, we have, we'll have several widens along this if, if development does occur. Particularly the Pritchett Track will also be doing some widening along their frontage wells if, if they develop some.
Now, the Pritchett Track will be widening their frontage?
Yes.
So really, the, just to the north of the track, that'd be the potential bottleneck?
There, there could be, yeah. Again, if, as development occurs, missing gaps, that, those may be opportunities. As, as other development occurs in the area, for them to fill in those gaps, or it becomes a, a state, state transportation improvement project, or a, or a town capital improvement project to fill in those gaps.
John, could I double down on your question there?
Sure.
The, the little chunk of this parcel that is cut out for the house?
Mm-hmm.
The Colonial Baptist Church has a widening that kind of tapers from two lanes into one. Does that widening happen before or after that house? In other words, could we end up with, because that house is being developed, we get a little bottleneck just at that house?
In theory, yeah, it could, it could occur.
How do we fix that?
How do we fix that?
Because that would look pretty dumb.
Yeah, we do have a lot of those cases around, around Cary or in other jurisdictions where development has widened out. But there are maybe a property or two in between that doesn't get widened out. So we have sometimes a lot of unused pavement out there. It just gets pavement markings, temporary pavement markings get put in place. That would, that would constrict traffic down to it. Again, some of that widening, though, could also be used for any turn lanes into the development. Generally,
What I'm really looking for, is there any way in this process to kind of make sure that we connect to what's already widened, so we don't end up with a 20-foot bump out?
Not without a
Not without a code amendment to do that, and I'm not even sure if we would have the statutory authority to do that for improvements off-site.
Though I'm looking at you, I was actually thinking of somebody that's sitting up in the gallery.
[laughing].
Well, just in that regard, if this little piece of property, and I assume this belongs to one of the property owners that's going to remain there, just to get back to Mr. Evangelist's...
Yes, this is the...
Buffer thing?
This is the residence of the property owner.
Okay.
Who would be main, presumably, remaining in the home.
So in essence, if I understand Mr. Jensen correctly, and, and I believe our chairman's question is getting to this, if, if this homeowner lives there for another 20 or 30 years, we're going to have a little bump out sitting there, even if the property north of this site, between Colonial Baptist Church and this particular parcel, got developed.
Well, it's already widened right there.
No, I don't believe it is. These, there are, aren't there two house sites? Can we go back to your aerial view, please?
Yeah, can we, please? Because I thought the area where the Colonial Baptist Church blue was, was widened, but then it tapers back in very...
I think there's a trapezoidal little area there where it's kind of transitioned down. I don't...
There...
You can see two homes sitting there, Al, right up in this upper right corner.
Yeah, the taper here is happening right in front of those two homes, so I see your point. We end up with a bump.
Up here.
Right, right.
I happen to drive this road almost daily, and I run into a little mail truck that's trying to do rural delivery out there, and I understand John's concern about the bump out. And I, and you know, when we first saw this presentation in the staff report, staff report, while I will agree with Mr. Barron, our staff is damn good. Unfortunately, your staff report didn't show the cutout when the original location, location PFD was in there. So I, I guess what, what bothers me about this is the fact that potentially, and I don't know how old the citizen is that lives in this home, but if they were 45, you've got a potential of them living to maybe 75 years of age on average, and we're going to have a bump out that's going to sit there for that length of time until that property gets redeveloped. And I agree with you, that looks kind of, let's say awkward, rather than maybe dumb.
It looks pretty dumb.
But, you know, can't put lipstick on a pig, right?
The citizens driving won't understand our, our legal process. They will just say, "Boy, somebody did a dumb thing."
Yeah, it's, it even seems dumber if you're sitting in the right lane trying to, to urge you over into the left because the right lane disappears.
Yeah. So there's no way, just to make sure, and I'm clear on this, there's no way that we can mandate that this road widening include the homeowner's property.
Our current, our current site plan regulations couldn't allow off-site improvements, no. Now, it's not to say that when they, you know, DOT, when they, you know, it's their road, and when they approve the driveway permit or encroachment permit for widening, that they may impose that, that condition on them, but I'm not aware of that at this point in time until, until a site plan gets submitted on it. We just won't know until what DOT requirements will be.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to address this specific point, do you mind? Okay. I know, I know I'm speaking out of turn, so I want your permission before I start rambling, as I typically do.
I'm looking to understand...
Yeah, and I, I think you raise a good point. You'll note, along this area here, the right-of-way has already been dedicated.
Yes.
So, so we're talking about exclusively construction. We're not talking about additional right-of-way acquisition because they had to, I guess they had an improvement that they made to their home that required additional right-of-way dedication, so it's exclusively construction. I was just talking with the town attorney, and we would be happy to look at working on language that essentially, because if a subdivision came through and included the home as essentially Phase 1 of the subdivision, it would be considered for purposes of frontage improvements by the subdivision standard. So if the home was included, so we're not rezoning it because we don't need to rezone it, but theoretically, we could, we could include the home as part of our subdivision plan for the sole purpose of addressing the frontage improvement, if that is something that you want us to take a look at. Again, recognizing that there's no additional right-of-way dedication, it's just construction of that, that small section of roadway that we're talking about.
I think that would be very neighborly.
Okay. And is that something that you want us to work on? I mean, I think that's, Lisa and I would have to consult.
But we, we can't tell you to work on that, but we sure can smile if you do.
Yeah, well, and, and we will happily work on language with the town attorney and hopefully can come up with something that would give us the flexibility to incorporate a condition that closes the loop on that little stretch of road.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other points?
Just to follow up on that, would that be a zoning condition if, if that, or could it be?
It, it could, it could be a zoning condition. That's something that we would work on, could work on with, if that's something that the applicant wanted to pursue. I think because there are issues related to the location and the boundaries of the site, that it's something that we would need to, to work with that, to come up with language for how that could be accomplished.
And I ask because I know that some town council prefer not to get changes once it's been through planning and zoning and coming back to them, and then have additional zoning conditions. And so I'm wondering if that's something that should be addressed up front, or something that would, you know, is that something that you would take additional time on, or would...
One, uh, one...
Ask the applicant to...
Let, let me suggest, since I think we're all kind of in agreement that this would be a nice thing to happen, when I present this to town council, I could suggest that while it wasn't in the case we looked at, we had board support for any potential creative solution. I see everybody nodding, right? So effectively, I think I can get around the process and avoid another delay.
That's what I was trying to figure out, how it might work, okay?
Yep. Any other questions? Can we have a motion, please?
I move that the board forward Case Number 14REZ11 Kensington Place to Town Council with the recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second discussion.
I support this because I think that it's clearly the applicant is making every effort to work with the, not only the town of Cary, apparently, and with the adjacent HOA. So I think it's a, it's a great use of the land. I like that it has the walking distance to, or the walking capability to crossroads, and I just think it's a good, good project for this area.
Other comments?
I echo the same thing. It's from the inception to the planning to working out this little obstacle that we just encountered a few moments ago. It's, it's just the, the ability to try to become creative and work together with everyone else to, to come to a solution that works for everyone, and, and I applaud that.
I certainly agree. It's refreshing to have something where people have been working hard together to come up with something that seems to make a lot of sense.
It is. I am concerned about the, the traffic impact, the additional traffic on Holly Springs Road. However, it does appear that Holly Springs Road, both with the Pritchett Track and with this, there are improvements. Now, the bump outs, all the little changes in areas that are not covered do concern me, and I certainly hope something can be done with that. I don't normally drive on Holly Springs Road, but I do very frequently drive on certain other roads, Chapel Hill Road in particular, where we go from, you know, a certain stretch that's widened and then it decreases. And not only does it look dumb, it certainly looks dumb when you're driving it in a traffic jam. So I really hope that some way that will be resolved. One question that I, I forgot to ask, but perhaps don't really need an answer, is about sidewalks. I believe they would be required along this parcel for the rest of the way up to Walnut Street. I hope that, that some way sidewalks can be built to allow the walkability. Without the sidewalks, there is no walkability. It's only about a quarter mile up to crossing over Tryon to Tryon Village and some of the restaurants and shops there. Question is whether or not people will walk it. I certainly hope that the people who can walk it, now, some of us couldn't, but most people could. It's not that far. I hope people will. And if sidewalks are built the, the whole way, I hope they eventually will be, it will become walkable. So for that, I will support this.
And I just have a request. When we bring this to the town council, can you do a zoomed aerial view that kind of zooms down on the northeastern part of the parcel up to where the road widening is, so we can kind of get a better sense for exactly what we're dealing with here? Would make the discussion easier.
Certainly.
Thank you. In that case, I'm going to call, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a comment, too.
I'm, I'm going to support this. I think this is a, a good use of the property. I like the natural buffer in back. That is, that, that makes a nice transition there. Regarding the bump out, you know, the, I understand it's not in the capital improvement plan. Maybe it should be. I, I deal with CIPs every day, and it's just a matter of prioritizing things. Town of Cary has wonderful parks, wonderful trails, wonderful performing arts venues. Sometimes we've just got to belly up to the bar and do things that aren't sexy. And fixing little bump outs like this, maybe it's time Cary puts something together and says, "Anything less than 600 feet, yeah, it's on our dime," because it's just a matter of will to do it. It's money, but it's, traffic problems, these create traffic problems. And just put it in your CIP. Other than that, I'm going to support the project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll...
Yes, please.
...put my two cents worth in. I really don't want to sound too negative about this because I agree with just about everybody's comment about the fact that this was well put together when I first saw it. I was very happy to see this come along down the pike. I actually was maybe overly optimistic in thinking that the piece between the Colonial Baptist Church was, was part of this, but obviously, it is not, and that's unfortunate as well. The thing that just troubles me about this is we have four lanes up at Walnut and Tryon that subsequently merged down into two lanes right, right where this particular applicant property starts. And, and Holly Springs is, is heavily trafficked from commute traffic in the morning and in the evening, and it's almost one continuous stream of headlights and taillights during those hours, and is even heavily used during midday. And these little bump outs, to me, are not just stupid, they're an accident waiting to happen, and particularly when you have the kind of flow that is occurring 100 to 200 yards north and suddenly has to go into this bottleneck. So I agree with Mr. Gaston. Sometimes it, it would be nice if we spent our money on some things that aren't necessarily sexy, but they do make sense, and from a safety standpoint, they eliminate some hazards that in this case, I don't think the cost of this would be all that much greater. I wish it was something the developer could work out between us and, and the owners of the property, but I don't know whether it's going to happen or not. So I will support this motion.
I strongly agree with you. I would point out, however, that when you get to Cary Parkway going south, then we're going, we're going to get onto two lanes, and, and those parcels may be a long time before they develop. So the bottleneck is going to happen somewhere. I think we're going to move it south, which is a good thing, but we're still, we're not going to eliminate it.
And I'll weigh in quickly, too. I, I share the concerns about the traffic certainly that have been pointed out and won't repeat them, and, and glad that the applicant is willing to pursue potential solutions to that. My major concern with this is actually the density. Six units per acre is at the high end of medium-density residential, which would be 3 to 8. This is supposed to be low-density to medium-density, which should be, full range would be 1 to 8, and I would expect something to come in closer to the middle of, of that full range, something around, you know, four, perhaps five, not near the upper range of the medium, although technically it, it is within the, the range of LDR to MDR. And on balance, I do agree that this is a good product. It's a good use, and the applicant has worked with the neighbors, and because of the lack of opposition, I'll somewhat reluctantly support this, but I do think, I do share the council member's concern that the density seems to be quite at the high end.
Any other comments? Saying now I'm going to call this to a vote, all those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think that motion carried unanimously, which brings us to the last order of business, which is adjournment. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.